All right, President. General, here.
Here.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the concerned agenda?
Um, I think motion to, well, we need to table five B by this evening.
Okay. Motion with that.
Yes, motion to approve agenda.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public input is time plays for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Budget presentation, library.
So there, Lawrence here from the library board. And you should have in your packet all the budgets kind of in order. We won't worry about the revenues, that's the first page, so I'll go right to the expenditures.
I didn't.
We go over that.
I think it's in our packet.
One change that we will make right off the bat, different from the other day. Under repairs, maintenance utilities, the west wall fund I put down here, twenty thousand, that needs to go to ten. And that's for historic preservation advice, most of the work there has been done. They have a bid out for the windows, it's already been approved by Bennett Painting. And then they got, working on a grant for the fire escape. So.
What?
What windows? Front windows, upstairs on the side of the west, west.
Yeah.
So, he can explain or answer any questions you have beyond that, but that's just one change that came up.
So, it'll go from a hundred and eight to ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight four.
Yep.
Yep. Any questions for him? I think we're gonna talk to him, the main, the main increase was salaries, and that's just, that's how that works. And then a little bit of a decrease due to west wall from last year. Any questions for him?
How many people does the library serve annually?
You know, I don't have that number off the top of my head, more than happy to get it to you, so.
Do you know how many, how many people come in a given day or a given week or anything like that?
Well, so it depends very greatly, week to week. But, you know, if you're talking about like just coming in for books or to check something out, you know, I mean, you could, it could be anywhere from, you know, on certain days, nobody, to twenty different people. But whenever you go in there, somebody's in there, usually speaking. But the library also has lots of programs, so like we're to have certain programs, there might be fifty, two hundred people at that program. There are other things, you know, purposes that the library serves, like the Girl Scout troop that I'm the troop leader of has our meetings upstairs in the Inheritage Hall. So it provides, you know, a lot of meeting spaces for the people. And, you know, somebody's in there working or using the wifi. I find it like really interesting, every month, you know, you'll see a huge revenue boost from the library for prints, copies and faxes, anywhere from like fourteen to twenty dollars a month. We don't charge very much for those, but like that is like a pretty vital service that we provide to people that need to send scans or faxes, they don't have access to that kind of equipment, you know. So, I mean, we're, we're serving everybody, doing a lot of different things.
Any questions? Pretty easy then.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Terry.
Good on the expenditures on cemetery. Big differences from the previous year. Obviously, saw them eighteen thousand on there for minor equipment, that's from the GIS program. So that's been zeroed out. And then, everything else, I did increase the contractual services. That's up a thousand dollars just for the maintenance and the IT support of that service once we get over. It's gonna be the first year, so it's gonna be hard to tell what we're at, but that was just a ballpark that they suggested to put in. So overall, C fifty-three, one seventy-five is the total budget. And currently, it's sixty-five, four fifty, but obviously that had the nineteen thousand from the GIS. I guess we did also increase the other five thousand to make up that difference, was for the moment. Just 'cause the increases as we go, and it's hard to gauge based on grass growing and all that, so. I know we talked about fence, are we still looking at that? You know, the tree out here, brought one new for whatever.
Yeah, she brought my name for a tree, I was gonna ask the same thing, but did they ever decide what we wanna do?
Yeah, I think we just kind of, we did the trimming, there's some people that weren't happy with that, so I think the, wasn't there gonna plant trees?
Now, it's defensive.
See, I, I think, you know, like the trees on, like where Aldrin's thing is, I think those look fine. I think, I think that all look fine. I mean, it is cut off the bottom, stuff that was dead anyway. But we need to, I don't even remember what the checklist, how much the check was, but I mean, she brought that in for something to go with it, or whatever it was.
Yeah, she's talking about blue spruce.
Yeah.
She wanted trees.
She wanted trees, put in there, not fence.
And I thought she was accepting a fence.
What's that?
I thought she would accept a fence.
Yeah.
In case of no space for the trees or.
Right. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the only part that we were talking was the part like behind the residence on Jackson, I don't think we were talking before.
I, I think that was the fence space.
Yeah.
And the rest of it would be trees or nothing.
Yeah.
I thought maybe some barberries or something the deer wouldn't mess with, that would grow tall enough to obscure the lower part of the.
The upper of the branches, but.
Yeah. I don't think we determined anything for sure.
And did we turn that over or ask the tree board to make a?
That's what I'll, I can give that to them and I can fine tune that number, it would go in the ground maintenance on the final budget, so I can make a note to, and talk to them to add.
Phase money's where, in the general fund?
So, yeah, that goes in as a revenue, so that would just, we'd pull that out of there when we go and do that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it'd be great if you could get that turned over and they can formulate an opinion on it, put it on an extra agenda or whatever.
Does this, does this have money in there for stone repairs?
Yes, if you go to contractual services. It's like, I need to increase that a little bit, to forty-five hundred.
Is there any, anything you need on cemetery crews?
No, we're pretty good right now.
There's some tree removal coming up out there, or that's not even done?
No, that's for when the ground freezes, so hopefully mid next month.
We already, we already got that one.
That's, that's the issue.
So, we're just waiting on the weather conditions.
Software stuff already done?
All the software.
That's, that'll be out this one too. I actually just got the contract from them today, so.
There's a tree that's broken by the big stone. And I don't know how that's playing out, they were asking to maybe have that tree sculpted by somebody, but I don't, I'm unaware that the Lisbon Legion's showing any interest in doing that at all.
I, I talked to two members, Mr. Caspers and Mr. Brolet. The last I knew, Caspers presented the meeting the next day, Mr. Brolet contacted me and asked me some questions about it, and they were gonna give back to me what they decided, I have not heard back. So if that's something we wanna.
Well, we're gonna have a tree guy in there, in that area when it gets hard, we gotta make the decision before.
Well, we can cut it down.
Yeah, we're the ones that cleaned up that tree at the beginning, but.
I mean, if it, if it comes, we just left it because they wanted, potentially wanted to do something, but if it's, if they don't wanna do it, we'll just go in there, our crew will go in there, we'll cut it down.
Yeah, I don't know what, what we need to get, yes or no for that.
Anything else? Economic development.
Joe?
Yep. Joe, come on up.
So I broke down this little speech here, and it's all, you got it in front of you as well. And then I also put the budgets of both of the organizations I work with, here, so you guys got all that first, too. So, my name is Joe Jensen, I'm the Director of Main Street Marketing for the Mount Burn in Lisbon Community Development Group, CDG, and the Mount Burn in Lisbon Community Charitable Development Group. So we're two organizations with one mission, to promote and develop the business environment, including, but not limited to the Main Street District, and to enhance the quality of life in the communities that we serve. Basically, our economic development work is done through CDG, and our quality of life work is done through the CCG. They're both serving the same purpose, but we're able to do more by having two organizations. The one's a five-one C six, and the other's a five-one C three. So this year, we were able to help ten businesses through our annual big grants. And we call them big, but that stands for Business Improvement Grants. It's a total of ten thousand dollars, and that was granted to Mount Burn in Lisbon business owners, including Canton Studios, Lisbon Library, Indulgent Salon, and Lisbon Auto Body and Paint. And you can probably see a lot of that work right on your Main Street. Canton Studios receives greater than seventy dollars for a month's indulgent salon, one thousand, one thirty-four. Lisbon Auto Body and Paint, one-one-three-four as well. That work's not been done yet, I've given up to spring to get it done, they were having some trouble getting the work done. And then Lisbon Library, one thousand, three hundred and ten. One thousand, two hundred and fifty in scholarships, we have Halloween Town, five hundred bucks. I think we use that all for candy, but. And then, Main Day at the Ballpark is something we do for both communities, so the half, I guess, split between the two communities was six seventy-five. And then Lisbon Movie Night, two fifty, and SoundCloud Days, two fifty. So we continue to work with drawing on projects, including the new Lisbon Easter event, the Movie Night during SoundCloud Days, and the ongoing Halloween Town project. Becky from Canton Studios has asked to help us secure funding for new historic kiosks related to Lincoln Highway on behalf of historic preservation. I'm not quite sure what's gonna become of that yet, but we are working with her on that. And then, earlier this year, for our relationship with Channel A, Lisbon was provided that ten thousand dollars for tree replacement. We came here with Michael Kuber, and I had a picture taken with you, with a check of ten grand. CDG provided funding to send Barbie E to the State Main Street Conference of Pella this year, and Michelle Zaruba from Phil's Bank, Lisbon, to the National Conference in Richmond, Virginia, where we were one of eight Main Street organizations that were considered for the Gamsel Award, one of eight. So, also, in last year, Casey Crowell from downtown Lisbon has been added as a CDG board member. Last time this year, that was someone that was brought up, if there wasn't enough Lisbon people on the board. All of this is in addition to our marketing and promotion work for both communities, with our visitor guide, our tear-off maps of both communities, and our ongoing financial support of the events and scholarships for students in both, Mount Burn and Lisbon. So we enjoy working with the city of Lisbon and its staff and the volunteers, we look forward to another great year. We're asking six thousand again, I don't think we've asked for any more than that for a number of years now, to help with our annual expenses and to continue to be an active partner with the city of Lisbon. Questions?
Any questions for Joe? Did notice on there, there is another five thousand, that is for B Lisbon. Assuming you want to continue to have to try to.
What?
The B Lisbon Grant. We've offered that out before for, it's kind of similar, spinoff of the big grant.
We worked with them guys on that one.
Yeah, you guys don't do it, that's just where it comes out of, for us. We've had some trouble with the prices being so high, nobody's applied in the last, last go around, so.
We're happy to continue partnering with you with that, whatever you need from us. It's similar to what we do with the big grants, so we do, we do it regular.
So that comes out of here.
So, is our cash outlay eleven thousand or six thousand?
So to Joe at CDG, it's six thousand.
The five is just here.
House for B Lisbon, so a total budget for economic development is eleven thousand.
Do you do anything to advertise outside the community for bringing people into town? Or is it just, if people happen to come to town, is it just, is it just?
Up until last year, we distributed those guides, but no, we only send them.
To people in town?
They, they go in the Sun newspapers, everybody gets one, in the Sun newspaper. And then, I'm sure there's a stack here, there's a stack at the City Call. Stack at the hotel. And then whenever anyone contacts me, comes out of town, or when anybody has a conference or a group of people in, they ask me to bring a bunch over, so.
Those in Cornell have some too.
Cornell always has some, that's.
A lot of.
We put it in our new resident package that we hand out here when a new resident comes to town.
And realtors usually too, I see, they always ask me for a bunch.
And are those updated every year?
Yes, ma'am. We used to do it every other, but it's every year now.
We're, we're gonna turn the sun now, and publish it, this second piece.
Any more questions for Joe?
You both agree with, God bless, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, I'm excused, I think.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Community, community communication. So, I'll go with that one with you. Tree maintenance, we cut back on. The ash trees that are remaining throughout the community are still in good shape. So as long as those stay strong, we're gonna keep them up until they start to show the ash wood.
Did we treat them, is that why they're still strong, or we're just lucky?
No, it's, I mean, they're strong, they're, it's just a matter of time, I mean, it's not like.
So I thought.
Yeah, it's inevitable. I mean, they're still green and there's no dead.
Yeah, they die at the top first.
Yeah, and that still looks good, and I just, I mean, we've taken so many trees down that I couldn't say, you know, it's a perfectly good-looking tree, we know it's, so that's why we decided to leave them. We don't know really if there's any small percent that might be resistant, in the board.
Right, well, they haven't, they haven't come across, said anything, and then you have to see.
Yeah, they just kind of don't know for sure.
Right, so, we'll just keep an eye on them, and that's, that's all we can do, I mean, right now they look healthy, and I don't, you know, we're not in the business to take a healthy tree, so.
I mean, not only we're down to, I remember the tree survey, we had a hundred and five in the city right away.
Right, we're, we're down to just under twenty, or just over twenty, any?
Oh, wow. Good thing for duration, I guess.
Okay. Up at the top, you see the donations on the revenue, we did apply for Trees Forever. Plan would be to plant those back. We still have the channel seed money, but we just did, how many was it, thirty-six? Thirty-six trees. It takes quite the, quite the work to keep them going, so kinda wanna keep doing these in succession and not do just a whole bunch once. So, we'll keep working to put those back. Also, the water main project is gonna impact some of those too, so we're gonna wanna make sure that we fill that area of trees and not spend all what we have now to do that, so. That's pretty much all I have. Don't they have any questions or anything? The big thing the last couple of years has been the tree maintenance with Duratio and the ash wood, so that's starting to windle down, and I don't know of any trees right now, Duratio-related, other than a couple that we're gonna take care of here or there in-house, but I think most of those are all taken care of. Any questions, Brandon? Doug, you next.
Should have a little spreadsheet in front of you, Brandon handed out today, I think. We've had, now the police advisory board just last week went over kind of the budget proposals. Offered, the budget is not set yet, we're still working on that as well, but wanna be prepared for this. Largest percentage of the police budget is your full salary or your salaries and benefits, the people that, that work there. So, the sections that you're seeing listed here are the budget for a cost of personnel from that perspective. Doesn't include the remaining portions of that. What I've tried to do is remain consistent with, when we started the twenty-eight E with operating at about twenty-eight percent for the balance of the estimation of funding, that's where the three hundred and forty thousand came from originally. And then, remind you also, this year, we recently went through a huge pay study, Grenell Pay Study, and adjusted wages for employees, that is not included in this number yet, even though we're still paying it out today as we go. And then, the next projected raise will be July first at three percent as well. Insurance on the far right, that twelve percent estimated is referring to the Blue Cross Blue Shield or health insurance for employees. As you can probably estimate and remember from your discussions with your personnel, twelve percent's probably very low. Depends on where they're at, sometimes it's upwards of twenty percent in there, we just don't know what that number is yet, so. I kinda try to use a midline and a baseline, keep that simple. Breaking all that down, we know that the cost of this personnel change will be thirty-eight thousand more, thirty-eight, nine hundred more starting July first than it is this year, from that perspective. And so those are the numbers we use. When you calculate that into the one point two million budget we have currently, it takes the, the cost to about three hundred and fifty-six thousand, where that twenty-eight percent mark should fall. So I met with Brandon, I've met with Chris, both city administrators, and went over the, the numbers with them, and then we met with the police advisory board as well. Trying to remain fair and consistent across the board, and for ease of budgeting, we're recommending a three percent this year and a three percent next year for the increase, for the, for the budget portion on Lisbon's side of that twenty-five percent.
Questions for Doug?
Down here in this, is this, this thing right here, this, you've got, when it's spreadsheet, where it says maintenance buildings, vehicle operations, is that obsolete, or is that?
Yeah. You talking about? So if you look on, if you go to this page here, I put, it's kind of in yellow, it's highlighted. So if you take the annual increases, which is gonna be thirty-eight, nine, thirty-eight, if you take twenty-eight percent of that, and that's just, this is just the staff, it equals ten thousand, nine oh two, that's just the staffing increase. Well, our percentage of three percent is gonna be ten thousand, two hundred, which falls below that. So we're not paying realistically an increase for a building, for cars, for equipment, for IT service, for.
Gas.
Gas. We're strictly paying our twenty-eight percent of wages and benefits. So, no, all this stuff on here, the building and all that, the only thing you see on there is on page two, is the hundred dollars for pest control, and that gets provided out amongst the, all the entities here when they come here to, to spray, so. That's why his amount of three fifty, two hundred, I had to add the hundred dollars for that, so it's three fifty, three hundred total. And if you notice, the nixle thing that was paid out of this last year, I'm moving that to emergency management, since that's ours in-house. So his budget is strictly this.
Wages and.
Yeah, if you look at this.
So it's this spreadsheet right here, this is what we're paying our increases for right here, on this.
Yeah, the reality is, the twenty-eight percent is where I base the total cost. So, when we get to the end of the day, hopefully, we're still close to that twenty-eight percent mark when we, when our budget sets the budget. I think we're probably gonna be a little less than that, but it's not gonna be a significant amount of difference from that same point. Without knowing what those numbers are, which we won't, you know, we're gonna, we're starting our budget process as well, it's hard to gauge a lot of that, but I figure if we're still close to that twenty-eight percent mark, that's kind of consistent with where we have been the entire time. If you break that down over this, this will take us through year four of the twenty-eight E. And these are the only two increases that you've had since we started the twenty-eight E, so that averages out to about two percent. Actually, one and a half percent over the four-year period of increase from there.
No, I just see this in perspective, that's about it.
Yeah, so that's, eventually in time, we're gonna get in here and we'll delete all those out, give a pen to it, and then we'll clean this sheet up, but we haven't, haven't done that yet.
Takes a few bunch of cycles to be able to.
Yeah, just see how this, once these actuals go away, you know, through, through time, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Discussion possible action reference, payment warrants through December thirty-first.
So this is just an annual thing that we have. There'll be checks that'll need to be paid prior to December thirty-first. Doug would sign the check, and then I would second the checks, and then obviously, it comes to January nineteenth, you guys approve it.
Yeah, we have a motion to pay the warrants through December.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Discussion possible action reference payment requires foundation construction and reference to work this whole complex.
So I see the email from Lisa Birch. This is kind of a final big bill, there is, as you see there, there's some change orders that'll come, and then the sixty-one thousand, once they get the project complete. But this is for all the previous work that they've done, as well as the dirt work that was completed, that we requested they do, they did that last week.
What's left to be done?
Uh, there's some concrete issues that need addressed.
I don't, I don't know if they got storm intakes back to.
Storm, storm intakes back to.
Yeah. They still gotta do a final sweeping, we gotta go.
Gotta do a wash through, so.
Punch list types.
Yep. We did.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Discussion possible action, approve bylaws for Lisbon Parking Rack Association.
So this is just the bylaws that go along with the articles of incorporation, I have this submitted already, I've been working with Brandon. All the bylaws are similar to the fire department, and they're in front of you guys, so I would like those to be approved tonight.
Our attorney looked through these.
What's that?
Does our attorney look through those?
Our attorney has not, since it's not city affiliated, but I can have him do that prior to.
I consider it kind of city affiliated.
Well, he went through the constitution, but not their own set of bylaws. So he had the constitution, but he, I did not give him his own. These are more their rules in-house.
These are more their rules in-house.
Probably enforceable.
No, this is not a, just, just make it whatever, he's gonna say whatever they wanna do for rules.
I'd like to see a number eight, or, or, an article VIi, number nine, and if you go into this alcohol service, then all members that are gonna take it, we must take, uh, responsible alcohol service.
And you'll have, yeah, I mean, that's a law, you'll have to do that anyway, so, if that's something you guys, I mean, that's just, that's a given, when, when we do that, there's, that's a, you're gonna have to do that anyway, so if that's something you want in there, I can definitely have it in there, but they won't be able to serve alcohol unless they have it.
That's the city ordinance, yeah.
So, that's something, I, I can absolutely put it in there, but...
It's a few... Let's, we can just add it.
Kinda like this suggestion.
Yeah, we can just add it to there.
That way, just, it's down for liability. You can even do the IPAC drinking. Just going to, alcohol coverage and push IPAC, and it's, it's just a bunch of purpose.
Yeah, good touch, Greg. Good touch, Greg.
Uh, motion, the motion is something with that direction?
I make a motion to, um, we can approve it tonight based on adding that tip certification.
Motion, second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Discussion possible action in reference to quote on blind shades at City Hall.
Uh, Mike had brought this up last meeting, and, um, he had budget lines stop in to quote out, uh, blinds for City Hall, so there's two quotes in front of you, one is for, uh, film over the window, which is like a tent, um, and the other's for actual blinds with the chain mechanism that go down the side. Uh, I did talk to Marcia and Christina, who that impacts the most. A couple things with the, the tent, on the outside, it's gonna be reflective in the daytime, so when a car pulls in, um, you can call it a safety thing, where they're only gonna see themselves versus whoever's in here, but at night, you can see in, like a normal window. It does tint the window, the wood tinted glare, um, I, they said they would be fine with the, the tent, it would be very, no minimum, you know, no maintenance whatsoever, you wouldn't have to adjust them, um, you know, then you add the actual shades, like Marcia, Marcia doesn't have a shade, she just kinda shuts that door when it's real bad. This time of year, it's terrible, because the sun's in the south, so it's a lot worse. Uh, but Christina does have a shade on her window, but this time of year, she's got it down quite a ways, just because it's, the sun comes in and blares off the concrete, or the car, or the floor, and then it blared in. So, if that's something you guys are interested in, there's two quotes here, uh, 4260 is the quote for the film, and 5675 for the shades.
Are, are we, who's, Marcia and Christina the ones that have to deal with this? Who else complains?
Why I brought it up was, is when we were, the last election we had in here, there were people that were seated here in front, helping group, doing this, every time the door opened, and it just seemed to me to be an extremely inefficient way, and then we've got stuff built in front of at least one of the two ladies out there to try and, this looks very unprofessional to me, it just seemed to me to solve the problem, so that's why I, yeah, got the bids.
Well, I'm hoping that, uh, someday, in COVID times, maybe, that, that mechanism there that you're talking about, that was built for, so people could stand behind it without relying on...
COVID, it's a COVID shield.
It's a COVID shield, it's not a...
Permanent structure.
So, um, but she does not have a shade, but she has that, that door, so a lot of time, she'll shut that door halfway, a sliding door, which, which helps, so...
You know, as far as the election workers are concerned, we just shift them over six feet, and that gets them out of the way of the, of the glare from the, from the door? I mean, I hate to spend five grand for this, for one day every two years, or something like that.
Well, I think it's much more than one day, I don't know that, I don't know that it's worth the 4,000 or whatever they quoted that, but, uh...
Well, the other side too, if we're gonna obscure the windows, what's the point of putting the decorations in the, you know, in, in view of the windows?
If you got, um, if you have blinds, you can put the decorations up, you got, that's still making it, I mean, still mostly the kind of...
Has Marcia and Christina ever complained about it prior?
Not me personally, I don't know, I know Rick had talked one time, I think, didn't they say, they even think they could put these up because of that, that air duct, or something like that?
They did it upstairs, they did it down.
Because of the air duct?
But she seemed to think that they could, um, it'd be very similar to one of Marcia's, it's got the chain mechanism, which, or actually, I think, they're about done making those, from the sound of it.
Well, the same with upstairs?
What's that?
Not like it?
No, this would be a chain, the chain based on lines, because people choke on the... Yeah, they're not too fine.
Well, how's that gonna affect the heat gain in the winter time?
So, the, yeah, it's gonna, the, the, the chain mechanism, low shade, our solar shade, um, so that will, will prevent some of that, you know, the natural light coming in, it's better to help some of the heat, um, you know, if, if the windows, we, we did have the windows inspected, the windows were not leaking, uh, down here, but that would, you know, once it, once it hits that shade, it's already in here, so it's really not gonna do much of that, but it would, she did say that they are solar shade, so they, they try to adore, but, um, it's gonna look improbable. And then obviously, the reflectors will do the same thing, you know, that, some of the reflectors, but it's up to you guys, what you...
If you wanna see the tinting, they put that on Mount Vernon City Hall recently, probably six months ago or so, maybe, um, on all the front windows on First Street there, so it is, it is a weird look, um...
I think Unity Point has it as well, when you go in there, you can see it.
When you're on the inside in the daytime, they can't see, you stand on the inside window, and they can't tell you're there, I guess, it blocks view from that perspective as well.
Would they, so is the tinting on the outside or the inside?
The...
I think it's on the inside.
I think, if you say it's on the inside, I believe.
Yeah.
What do you guys wanna do?
This would be something I could put on the, you know, if I had to talk about it, or think about it, we can bring it up to the budget meeting, you know, when I do our budget meeting for City Hall.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't wanna do anything with it right now, so...
Is that doing all of the doors all the way down?
Let's do everything on the south, all the way out, including the vestibule, because when the sun goes up in the morning, you know, comes over to the history center there, so, it makes sense, not, it's not doing the door, or, uh, east side, maybe the east side, just...
Do you guys wanna do that when we put it up to building maintenance?
Yeah, let's, let's table that until our budget comes home, but thank you for giving me quotes. You need a motion? I make a motion to table this until city budgets, when we come up, or when our...
For a second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing, so public hearing for golf cart ordinance update.
So, the state passed the, uh, new code reference to the UTV ATV, um, it's a part of our golf carts, golf cart ordinance, so those now need to be separate, so I request that we set a public hearing, um, for January 9th, and the attorneys from both communities have looked it over and, um, blessed what we're gonna do, so...
I make a motion to set the public hearing for January 9th.
Motion, second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Do you need, this is a resolution, do you need roll call?
It's not a resolution.
To set a public hearing.
Just set a public hearing.
Okay.
Set a public hearing for chapter 120, liquor license, ordinance update.
So, the state put out some new language that we need to add to our ordinance, uh, same deal, set a public hearing for the 9th of January, if you would.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for January 9th.
You know, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing for UTV ATV snowmobile ordinance.
Same night?
Yep.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for UTV ATV to January 9th.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Uh, you probably see that there's a card, um, in here from reference to the, uh, Imagination Library, thanks for the card, I believe it's in your packet, that's all I have.
City engineer report.
Not much needed to report on, just continue to work on the water main, please.
Okay, thanks. Public work.
Uh, we're working on finishing the final touches of getting the spyro screen pulled back in, actually, we had the weldings, welding done to it, um, hopefully, we get that, that done, and everything should work like it's supposed to. Um, with the water main project, I don't know if you guys know the salt markings on the intersections for that core boring, that we had to put on the last meeting to get approved, so they should be starting that this week, um, other than that, that's it.
Still getting them, please?
Yes. Yes. If, if we don't pick them up now, we gotta pick them up and spray them, so, yeah.
And, uh, you bring anything to Travis?
I do not.
Person wrecked, Travis.
Not a whole lot, we have our movie in the park, this, or not movie in the park, um, movie upstairs above the library on Sunday, we'll be showing the Grand Central Shirts at 1:00, um, registrations for boys' basketball are going now, we have good numbers so far, girls' basketball have their last week of games this coming Saturday, um, everything has been great there, and we've been working with Lisbon, uh, Mount Vernon, so on again, along with the sports, and, uh, continuing to work on the Destination Iowa Grant, and we're working to get that wrapped up in the submitted.
Questions for Brandon?
Please permit.
Uh, November 11th, please permit, I hope to you guys, hopefully, today, um, and just finishing up with the seventh grade program of the DARE program at the Lisbon Schools, um, gonna have a subway party, I think it's Subway Party next, on the 19th. Also, particularly, uh, all the officers raised funds to, and donated to the Southeast Lynn, um, for the holiday givings, adoptive families, so, with that, so, other than that, nothing much.
Anything for Doug? Ambulance?
Uh, they sent that today as well, and that's up, coming up, if you have any...
Attorney.
Um, the only thing I have is, been working with Workers Comp, reference, um, getting our physicals up to date and paperwork filled out with that, also worked with, um, Sam from ISO, referencing insurance ratings, uh, gathering some documents with him, hopefully, we'll have our report back here in the next month, that's all I have, fire department related.
Fire department. City administrator.
Um, kinda briefed on the sports complex, everything should be pretty well done, but what we mentioned, um, second phase, or, I shouldn't say that, uh, ball diamond bid, um, they're still planning to go off this winter with the bids for the few ball diamonds, so YTT, uh, we'll be getting back with an update, they're waiting on to get some numbers, um, getting that bid prepared. Um, you'll notice out there, the blocks are in place, uh, we did get the signage today, the signs came in, actually, they came in last Friday, I believe, um, so the signs are on blocks for the road closed, I just asked the general public to please do not go around, um, the blocks are put in a place that will not impact anybody that lives anywhere around there, they're, they're well off of any residents, uh, shouldn't be an issue. If there is questions about snow, the plan is, just like I told the residents up on Third Avenue, and they were good with this, um, we're gonna plow down to those blocks, obviously, we don't wanna plow and block the road closed signs, so, once we start, um, doing our cleanup, you know, our intersections and alleys and all that stuff's done, we'll go back there with the blower and blow that snow out, put them away from those blocks, um, so it's not gonna be piled up there all winter, anything like that, so, um, if you have any questions or comments, please, don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, went to the historic preservation meeting last week, working on, again, working with them and grading on the Destination Iowa Grant, um, the plan is to get that turned in, um, on or before January, or December 23rd, the deadline's the 31st, um, and I'd like to have it on their desk that week prior to the new year. Obviously, working budget forms, different department heads, working with Christina for that, also working with Lynn County in reference to the rental inspections, getting those lists, um, there's been some changes and different things, we're getting those all up to date, I've also worked with them, and they're helping me out with some long-term nuisances that I've been dealing with for quite a while, uh, so, making some headway there. Uh, worked with Doug and the attorneys on the golf cart, golf cart to UTV ordinances, uh, met with Lion Energy, reference the light resolution that you guys passed last week, reference to Martha Street, so hopefully, those will be getting put in here shortly. Uh, Travis and I started discussions on the union contract, uh, the union contract for the employees expires in, uh, July, or June 30th, so, um, that'll be coming up for you guys' approval. Uh, we had police advisory board meeting last week, and I had a request from Historic Preservation, who was on the January 9th meeting, along with the History Center for their budget. They would like to do theirs at 6:30 and have a workshop with it from 6:30 to 7:00, um, if you guys are available or want to do that.
What is yours?
I would ask, uh, January 9th.
Why not 7?
Cause they wanna meet with you longer than their normal presentation, so, I said that I would...
Ooh, the library?
Uh, Historic Preservation.
Libraries are gone.
I don't understand why we have to have an early start, but...
I... I just said that I would present it, um...
I don't have a problem with it, but it's taking half an hour.
But 7, the Reagan meeting's there, so...
That's just it, they don't get any more time during the...
They'll, they'll get their, they'll get their time during the Reagan meeting.
They'll get their time during the meeting, but that, I mean, if we're already spending a half an hour with them.
And we can do theirs, that's part of the half hour too, if you want.
That's what I was thinking.
It's up to you guys, I, I just said I'd pass it on, and...
How many people's in the union? In the union?
We're covered by one, four of us are covered by, public works are covered by...
Paying members for you?
Uh, two, two paying.
So, what did we decide on the History Center thing? Will this not be prevalent time?
Preservation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure, I, I just questioned why they need extra time.
So we're, uh, meet just at seven, uh, six-thirty?
They just want, they want...
I guess if they want half an hour, it's either they want to get out of here earlier than...
They, they've been wanting to meet with us to explain what they're doing.
Are we going to meet at six-thirty?
Six-thirty's fine with me.
Six-thirty should be fine with me.
I, I can make it work, if that's what we have to do.
Mike, Rick, you get it?
Am I giving less budget goals or covering it early?
Anything else, Brandon?
That, that was thankfully the last item.
Um, any questions, Brandon? I want some report. Sarah?
Um, I attended the police advisory board meeting, um, kind of, Doug already kind summarized what we discussed, budgeting, few other things, um, I know Southeast Lynn, Lynn is struggling with getting food in their food bank, so if anybody, you know, has the word around, you got some extra cans of corn in your cupboard, if you use it, um, that's all I got.
Happy holidays to everyone, that's all I have.
Mike?
Nothing.
Nate?
Um, I, I don't have anything, but you're right, this is the last meeting before the holiday break, so Merry Christmas and happy holidays, that's it.
So happy holidays, um, do we have coverings for those lights on, uh, you know, for covers open for Halloween, event for Christmas?
No, we're, Drake's been working on that, uh, grant, and as soon as he gets done with that, I want to start looking at different Christmas decorations along with covering with them, so...
Then last council meeting, I, that's the council, if they got anything that they want to see on the budget, on the budget for this year, um, so we're going through every house and make sure, we'll just think about that as well. As far as the history center, I know they're going to hit us up about that side, and I'm to the point of, I'm to the point of citing it, instead of setting one...
Talk to the industry building?
Yes.
Just got to keep fighting that, but it's about selling, good luck.
Um, I think that's all I have now.
They did the back part, like that's, different material underneath.
You can still cite it.
We can blue that side up, here, here.
Possible closed session pursuant to code Iowa twenty-one point five. Well, I do evaluate the professional competency of an individual's appointment hiring for four months or discharge, if deemed necessary, if a grant needs us, and if we're able to integrate, you added the business reputation, added the local request, go to closed session. Yes, please just...
Yes.
Motion second.
Who, who first, who, who's first?
I'll assume you first.
Mike first?
Thank you, lady.
Second.
Eva?
Nancy second, sorry, I'm taking notes.